Okay. Presentation purposes, we had one, we had two. Now we got three. Councilman Matthew Zone. Presentation purposes. (Applause). 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 So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a couple of my colleagues to join me in here. Majority Leader Phyllis Cleveland and Councilman Joe Sipperman. So, we're here tonight and looking at all these beautiful people in the back of the room. For those of you who came here tonight in connection with, for Hope for the Twenty-Seven Week, just please stand, be rising, be recognized. We're gonna ask you to stand at some other points, I take this to you right now. You know, there was a horrific day in our city. It was December 22nd, 2011. Michelle, I only know that date so well because it's not only your birthday, my wife's birthday, partner for 29 years, but I did get a phone call from a friend about an unfortunate situation that happened through the amazing work of our police department. Through a long investigation, you're gonna hear the story in a minute, they were able to come upon a home that had twenty-seven dogs in just horrendous condition. And what came out of very deep and dark and disparate day has turned into be one of the most uplifting, moving stories and partnership that I have ever seen in my eleven years serving at City Council. So, I want a few people to help me tell the story and then in a minute we have some commendations where we're gonna recognize a few individuals. First, I'd like to ask Detective Sean Smith to talk a little bit about the investigation, then Sergeant Carl Hartman. Sean?
Thank you. In December 2011, got a tip that there was a guy fighting dogs and selling drugs. Our office girl Stephanie handed it to me like at 3:30 in the afternoon and I go home before and I was like, "Well, I let this go one more day, some more dogs might get hurt, so I better take care of this." So, I went out to go check out the house. As I pulled up there, the guy I was looking for, Colin Rand, just happened to pull up in front of his house. So, he made it really easy for us to catch him. And I observed him making drug deals in front of his house. Within twenty-four hours, I was able to get a search warrant. I didn't know how I was gonna handle that, who else was gonna get to help me. It was a new thing for me. And I happened to see, "Hey Sergeant Carl Hartman, can you help me with this?" And his eyes lit up and he's like, "Where are we going, a dog fighter? Someone's hurt dogs, let's go, where are we going?" So, the very next day, we executed that search warrant on Colin Rand's house. And when we went in, it was absolutely horrific condition. There was, as soon as you walk in the door, pungent smell was hit you in the face. It was just feces everywhere and you could hear the dogs crying in the basement. There was approximately twenty dogs in the basement and there was another seven or eight out in the backyard. The dogs in the basement were on one side and all of their cages were pushed together. I don't think they ever got out of their cages. And then the other side of the basement was used as a dog fighting ring. So, it's bad enough that he's doing that to those dogs, but he made the other dogs watch what was happening at the same time. We also found drugs in the house, syringes that would actually try and put the dogs back together so they could get them back into another fight soon. We were able to successfully prosecute Colin Rand. He got six months in jail, which was the maximum for what he had done. And I'd just like to thank everybody that helped out, all the rescues that helped us, Sergeant Hartman, Ali Pillow in the Gang Unit, Mobley and Sheehan from CSU, the Wonder Twins, Bauer and Taylor. And it's been a great outpouring from everybody in the community to help out with this, all the rescues. We forged great friendships and I'm currently working on two more investigations and there's some more people being prosecuted for this. Thank you, thank you. (Applause).
Sergeant Carl Hartman.
Thank you everyone for listening. To start out, I've been a policeman for seventeen years and a sergeant for twenty-on-five. Prior to that, I was a detective for seven years and up to that date, December 22nd, I had never seen a case that was so horrific through and through. I had no idea when Sean came to me and said, "We have a case where there's possibly dog fighting," that I had no idea what we were gonna do. It's something, it's uncharted ground with our department. There was no orders, police orders that describe how to handle a case like this. There was no training and we just did it. I called my very good friend Sergeant Ali Pillow from the Gang Unit and he hustled up his squad, got us out there. Our fifth district CSU team came out and we hit the house. One thing Sean didn't mention was that there were guns in the house. And the gun that was in the house was used to euthanize the animals when they were too badly destroyed. Long story short, in the seventeen years, I've never seen the community come forward for anything that I'd ever done. As a policeman, I love this city, I love my job, and I love the people I work with and work for. But for seventeen years, I saw the lowest side of society. They didn't call me because they wanted to give me a birthday card, they called me because their husband was beating them or because they were shot at or things like that. But after we rescued the twenty-seven dogs, it wasn't over. We decided that the community had come forward, we had to do something for the community. The outpouring was unbelievable. The Humane Society said we couldn't do it because we don't have any money. ASPCA said we couldn't do it because we don't have any money. We were getting pushed aside by every major agency out there. Director John Baird stepped up, did what he could with these dogs, filled his kennel to capacity and beyond. Then the community came forward and took care of these dogs for however long it took to get them all rescued, fostered. Somebody else will speak on that. I was contacted by one of the vice presidents of the Cleveland Police Patrol Association, Detective Tom Ross, he's here today. He said, "We need to do something for the community." They spent all their money taking care of these dogs, these rescue agencies out there are left holding the bill. So, we put together a benefit. There were four original people involved, it was Becca, Julie, myself, and Tom Ross. And then a host of wonderful people came, stepped forward, said, "We'll help you plan this thing." We ended up filling the Cleveland Police Patrol Association with over seven-hundred people. We had to turn away three-hundred and we made over forty thousand dollars that every penny went from all of that. (Applause). And I'll stand here and tell you, it wasn't me, it wasn't Sergeant, or sorry Detective Tom Ross, it was this group that's here tonight that actually made it happen. And I'm proud to be with you and I'm proud to serve this city in this capacity and work with you on this. Out of this benefit, the community said, "Oh, you guys aren't done." We thought it was just a benefit, we're gonna go back to our jobs and live our normal lives as normal as they could be. But they said, "No, you guys have to continue your work, there's more, there's so much more to do." So, we formed a nonprofit organization called Badges for Bullying. Within three to four weeks, it went viral. I just had, two weeks ago, a guy from Australia called me and said, "Hello, I wants to start a chapter of Badges for Bullying in Sydney, Australia." So... (Applause). The word is out there and this is a huge movement in the city of Cleveland. It's one of the biggest things I've seen come out of the community within the city of Cleveland and I'm proud to be a part of. Thank you. (Applause).
I had the opportunity to testify at the sentence here in front of Judge Sutula and I made the comment, you look at our police officers who are on the street scrapping and fighting every day to make our community safe. Look at these two guys, how big and strong they are, but you can tell the depth and the soul of an individual who cares for our four-legged friend. And these two have more heart and more soul than just about anybody I know, so I want to thank you for what you guys have done today. (Applause). Sean's correct and Chief Baird's, the kennel was overwhelmed, but we are so fortunate that we have Chief John Baird as our Animal Control Officer. And John did some remarkable work with these individuals and I'd like to invite John Baird to make some remarks. Chief?
Chief. I've been in this business for about thirty-four years and we've had some high-profile cases. This is the only case where we've had an outpouring of volunteers that actually stayed after the incidents over. They are continually there every day, detectives with us every day, exercising dogs and the case that he's called in. And they go unrecognized, but they do unbelievable job to take care of these animals, they give them exercise, they give them some companionship, these dogs that are able to be adopted into good homes. And by turning around to breathe that everybody had a misconception over, these animals have become great pets and the city of Cleveland has great volunteers and we wouldn't be able to wrap up them. And I want to thank them, I know they're all here, they're not always recognized, but we do appreciate it. (Applause).
I want to personally acknowledge and recognize the extraordinary effort that Chief Baird has been making at the kennels to make conditions better for not only the animals, but also the volunteers who come in to work there. He can't do it alone and it truly does take a village, they say, to raise a child. Here, this is a whole region that's really making a difference. And we have an amazing nonprofit organization. Organization's name is FOC, F-O-C-K-E, Friends of Cleveland Kennel. You thought I was getting dirty. So, I'd like to ask the president of FOC, Becca Britton, to come up and talk to you about that. (Applause).
Thank you so much, Matt. They call us the Focers and we've actually, we love what we do and we, our goal is to support the animals at the Cleveland Kennel. The condition of the animals that committed to Cleveland Kennel is something that most people don't see. So, these animals are abandoned, neglected, abused. Friends of the Cleveland Kennel annually spends about twenty thousand dollars on vet bills alone just for the Cleveland Kennel animals in need. We arrange supply drives, we buy beds for the dogs, we have installed runs, fences, anything that the dogs need. We've also worked to create awareness about the Cleveland Kennel. So, I just want to thank everyone that's been involved with this particular effort. I can't tell you how many, as soon as this story hit the news with the twenty-seven, instantly I started, our voicemail line filled up, my email box was full. And it wasn't just people in Cleveland, it was people from all over the United States wanting to know how they could help. They wanted to give money, they wanted to do something. This, this was incredible and it was a big surprise. And I just want to thank the Cleveland police for working with Friends of the Cleveland Kennel to create this Hope for Twenty-Seven Fund. You know, the amount of support and the money that we received to help these dogs, medical care, was amazing. Most people don't know this, but the dogs, most of them were diagnosed with a blood disease called Ebema Gibsoni, which is prevalent in dogs from fighting rings. So, it's, one of our dogs actually almost died from it and that's how we found out about it. But it was, it was very expensive to treat and the symptoms are really bad once, once they, once they happen. So, we were very, it was not only important for the support for the community, but also to support the rescues and the cost of medical care for these dogs. Thank you very much for everyone's support.
Good job. (Applause). Dr. Sweetover, thank you for what you've done to help us. These individuals, I mean, you can sense the emotion here that's in the room tonight. I appreciate what you said about you love going to work every day because when you can save a dog's life, I mean, it just makes it all the better. And there's another woman who works extremely hard in trying to save people's, uh, dogs' lives, and that's Julie Kano Pinsky. Did I get that right?
You got it.
Oh, I got that right. Our communication director's Kat Nitski, so a little tongue twister there. So, Julie's gonna talk a little bit about the efforts to save the dogs and adopt them. Julie?
Thanks, Councilman Zone, I can't remember my words, I read as well those before me, so I wrote them down. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. My name is Julie Kano Pinsky, as Councilman Zone just said, I'm a volunteer at Cleveland Animal Control. I am only one of many volunteers who spends time temperament testing, networking, answering emails, providing fosters and rescues for dogs in CAC's care. Three of my personal dogs are from Cleveland Animal Control, I'm a Cleveland resident and I'm a taxpayer. Seated behind you are members of your community who give countless hours to save the lives of stray, unwanted dogs. (Applause). Just spend time with them in the kennel, transport them, open their homes for them, care for them, pay thousands of dollars to ensure their health, all in an effort to make sure each one finds the very best home. They are volunteers, rescuers, fosters, sponsorship pledges, transporters, networkers, and supporters. They are a village. A village that emerged when twenty-seven dogs were brought to CAC in December 2011. The twenty-seven brought local and national attention to Cleveland. It showed animal abuse at its worst and made people realize that there was major work to be done. Clevelanders who learned about these dogs and needs stood up and got involved. They collected donations and volunteer their time. The week between Christmas and New Year's of 2011 brought something the kennel may have never seen before. Community, community members flooded the kennel, walking dogs, giving treats, washing them, and showing them the compassion they had never experienced in their young lives. These efforts led to the dogs being released from the kennel to rescues. Thirteen rescues, eleven of them local, saved twenty-six dogs. They placed them in foster care where they enjoyed, where they learned how to be dogs and what it was like to be, what it is like to be loved. Many of them are now adopted and enjoying the life they have always deserved. When the twenty-seven came to CAC, they received a lot of media coverage. People responded to them as dogs in need. They were saved, but the needs of the kennels still exist. Over five thousand dogs have come through the kennel since two, since the twenty-seven did in December 2011. This isn't just about those twenty-seven lives, it's about the lives of all the abandoned, abused, neglected, and lost dogs in Cleveland. They too deserve a second chance. Since September of 2011, a small group of dedicated volunteers made it their mission to increase the save rate at Cleveland Animal Control. With the support of Chief Baird and Renee Pelayo, we started the kennel's first Facebook page and email account. We could target a whole breed since the Ohio law at that time, they had little to no options to leave the kennel. Our efforts exploded in December twenty, in December 2011 when twenty-seven dogs have changed things forever. Since that time, we have not really maintained those volunteer rescue efforts, we have expanded them. CAC has approximately forty regular volunteers who collectively dedicate approximately two hundred and sixty-five hours per week, which is the equivalent of six full-time employees to helping dogs in the following capacities.
So, to my council colleagues, Mayor is an honorable administration. Will you repeat that statistic again?
I sure can. CAC has approximately forty regular volunteers who collectively dedicate approximately two hundred and sixty-five hours per week, which is the equivalent of six full-time employees.
Wow.
And this is what we do. Network dogs from CAC online, answer emails, we get about a hundred emails a day, update the Facebook page, meet and greet with potential fosters to ensure good fit for our dogs, walking, washing, or photographing the dogs, conducting temperament assessments, performing reference checks on new rescue partners, transporting dogs from CAC to the vet, foster homes, or rescues. The kennel is only open thirty hours per week to the public. Volunteers are only able to be present at the kennel twenty-seven of those hours, which equates to only ten percent of volunteer efforts being spent directly at the kennel. We really need a rescue coordinator to assist us in our efforts. (Applause). Our work would not be possible without our relationships with rescues, especially local rescues, many who are present today, to find foster homes, provide medical care, and seek new homes for dogs from CAC. They have endured financial burdens to cover necessary vetting, training, boarding, et cetera, in order to ensure adoption for our dogs. Together, these volunteers, rescuers, fosters, sponsorship pledges, transporters, networkers, and supporters have saved almost one thousand dogs from CAC since September in 2011, dogs who would otherwise be dead without their efforts. This equates to approximately twelve dogs per week, two dogs per day, for every day the kennel is open. This is a major effort which has had a significant increase in the live release rate of the kennel. CAC is more than fifty years old and is in a deplorable state. The basic structure of the building is poor. Dog urine and feces are hosted in the box of dogs' kennels in a trough that carries the waste to a common drain. The kennel's thermostat is not working, so the heat only comes on full blast or not at all. Up until last summer, there was no air conditioning. Mice run rampant across the floors through the kennel and the cages. When it rains, the drains back up and flood the kennel several inches at times. All of these conditions can easily lead to the spread of seasons despite the kennel staff's efforts to make sure things are clean. Local rescues have reported spending between two hundred and two hundred and fifty dollars on average to sick, to treat sick dogs who they take from CAC. The dogs who come to CAC have medical needs and sometimes cannot be met given our current conditions. In 2011 alone, Friends of the Cleveland Kennel spent over twenty thousand dollars providing emergency care for over a hundred animals who were at the kennel. The resources are, are not there to handle the more than four thousand dogs that are taken into the facility every year. Cleveland dogs deserve better. They deserve a new building. (Applause). The twenty-seven brought us together. Our experience with them was a catalyst for change. They opened our eyes to the power of our community. We are moving forward together, saving the lives of many more dogs in Cleveland. It is our mission to continue this work and we ask for your help. We have been doing our part and now we ask that you do yours. I am one person whose name is among many, a village of people, and we are not going away. We are community members, police officers, educators, public servants, business professionals, and laborers. We are taxpayers and voters. We support a new beginning for Cleveland and that starts with a new building. Thank you.
(Applause). To my colleagues and other city officials who are here, I ask just for your indulgence because this story is just too amazing, there's just too many people who've been involved. We only have one more speaker, but before I introduce this woman, you know, I, I didn't know a whole lot about the pit bull breed until one day I had a little guy who was run over in front of my office. And I was able to rescue him and people like, like a Riker from The Monotop and Sandy Smith, Tommy Alana off the pit bull breed. I no longer have Gordon, but I have Geno now. And Sandy's an amazing woman who's talking so much about these animals. Sandy Smith.
As the proud owner of pit bull dogs, there are three dates that are very important to me. June 6th, 2011, which is when Cleveland City Council approved a pretty neutral dangerous dog ordinance that focuses on the behavior of the dog that we need to protect. On February 21st, 2012, the governor of the great state of Ohio signed into law HB14, which removed pit bull dogs from the state's definition of dangerous dogs. (Applause). On February 21st, 2012, the members of Cleveland City Council approved an ordinance to limit the tethering of dogs in the city of Cleveland. These three pieces of legislation are important to every animal advocate, every animal owner in this room who lives in the city of Cleveland or the state of Ohio. They're important because it means that the lives of many dogs have been saved and their quality of life has been improved. For many pit bull owners in this room, as well as many animal advocates and rescuers, I'd like to say thank you to all of you, the members of Cleveland City Council, Mayor Frank Jackson and the members of his administration, Chief Baird, and Councilman Zone, who were instrumental in looking beyond the myths and media stereotypes of the breed, choosing instead to move Cleveland to the forefront of humane animal control in the country. Pit bull dogs did not always suffer from the abuse and discrimination that they now face. They were brought to this country by our founding fathers and used to herd cattle and protect the children of the settlers who crossed the Great Plains. World War I Sergeant Stubby was a pit bull dog and the most decorated war dog in history. Theodore Roosevelt owned a pit bull dog named Pete, Helen Keller had one named Sir Thomas, and the Little Rascals, of course, had Pete. One of my personal favorite celebrities, Jon Stewart, has two pit bull dogs and as he's already revealed, our councilman Manzone and his family have a pit bull dog named Geno. Those of us who share our lives with these dogs love them because they're loyal, strong, athletic, smart, fearless, tenacious, and people-centric. Unfortunately, it is these same qualities that have made them the target of dog finders like Helen Rand and others who seek to profit from the suffering of the dogs. The twenty-seven dogs that were brought into the Cleveland Kennel in December 2011 not only increased awareness about dog finding in the city of Cleveland, they created an entire new community of animal advocates who now add their voices to those from the many rescues and shelters in our area and to our great institution, the Cleveland Animal Protective League. For this, I always will be grateful to those skinny, scared, abused, and ultimately hopeful dogs. A friend of mine has a Facebook page called I'm Matt and Hunter. On the page, she celebrates dogs, many of them pit bulls, who have survived horrific treatment at the hands of humans. Though many are scarred physically and emotionally, their stories of redemption and recovery are beautiful. She asked people to send in three words that described their dogs. I wrote to her about my aunt's eye, who was one of the twenty-seven, telling her that the three words that best described him were trust, hope, and love. Other words shared on the page included advocate, athlete, rescued, precious, loyal, curious, all heart, silly, goofball, courage, and hope. There literally were hundreds of words, but the two words used most often were love and family. Thank you.
At least I have a few commendations from Cleveland City Council I'd like to present. I have two dog champions and lovers with me, Councilwoman Phyllis Cleveland, Councilman Joe Sipperman, who recently has a rescue from the Cleveland Kennel. Joe, Phyllis, would you please come and join us?
This goes to Sergeant Carl Hartman, fifth district. (Applause). Detective Sean Smith. (Applause). Patrol Officer Richard Bauer. Is he here? Give it to the show. (Applause). Patrol Officer Robert Taylor. (Applause). Patrol Officer Richard Sheehan. (Applause). Patrol Officer Christopher Mobley. (Applause). Sergeant Ali Pillow. (Applause). Sergeant Timothy Patton. (Applause). Detective Tom Ross. (Applause).